Where is everybody?
That's what I want to know.
Online hopefully.
I, yeah, I know you're kind of excited about that.
There you go. Look at that.
Let's see how many soldiers we got here. Oh, here we go. Well, there's Paul. There's Adrian. Rich is probably still at work. Mimi's not going to be here. Minkoff, is he back yet? Okay. There's Sandy.
There's Kevin.
There's Kevin?
Yeah.
There we go.
Kevin Minkoff.
It's a little way here. Cool. That's warm.
There he is. All right. Okay, we are set. Good evening, Kevin.
Now, I'll say, good evening. Try that again.
There we go.
All right. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Trautel Planning Commission for Wednesday, January 10th, 2024. If we could have roll call, please.
All right. Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner Minkoff.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi.
Won't be here this evening.
Commissioner Pickett, or Prickett, sorry.
That's okay. Here.
Commissioner Wocox.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Will be joining us shortly. All right. And with that, I'd like to ask.
Hold on.
Okay. Sorry.
And Chair Sess.
Present. Okay, and at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance, and Commissioner Prickett will be leading this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, free and just as for all.
All right. And, um, let's see, the first question would be, is there anyone who would wish to speak to the planning commission this evening on a non-agenda item? Adrian? We're going to you.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, great. All right, moving along. Tonight's agenda item is a discussion on a reorganization of use tables and definitions.
Um, yes, so at the last meeting, we discussed, uh, looking at the development code. Uh, for those of you who are in person tonight, you'll notice you have an updated, uh, development code. Uh, for those of you who are not in person, I can bring it to the next meeting, or they, or they will be available for pickup at, uh, in the planning office. Uh, so we'll move on for everybody. Um, this is just the most updated version, um, that we have. So you'll notice that, uh, the last meeting, we discussed looking through, um, the definitions and use tables and seeing any word that could have some potential clarity or some areas that anybody thought might need to be, uh, reworked. Um, and going from then, we left that meeting with everybody having a little bit of, uh, homework to go home and see what, um, you all might have thought, and then bring that this meeting for us to discuss. And go. Uh, I will, I met with, uh, Chair Sessenson, uh, this week. We went over a couple, um, that he had brought forward, and as we continue our discussion, we can go through those, um, and as we just continue, I'll be putting them into a spreadsheet. Uh, so we have kind of a working document, and we can see what we want to do. I want to go through it, or, uh, have a report.
Okay, and so, um, if everyone's okay with it, we're going to start with definitions tonight, taking a look at those, which ones, you know, we think need to be updated, or some need to be combined. And, um, so really, at this point, you know, any definition is on the table. Okay, so we can talk about, um, Dakota's going to share his screen on some that we, we were looking at. But as we go through these, I guess the first question would be, as we go through them, Paul, or if there's one that you're looking at, doesn't make sense to you, or you want to talk about it, or look at it? Uh, the first one we came to, that we felt needed work, was clinic. Right? Okay, and, um, the current definition is okay, and this was just, um, if we're going to spell those out in that detail, a suggestion that I had was after dental, probably saying vision, counseling, or mental health-related services possibly? Or is that getting too detailed?
Um, that's why, uh, as you see here, that kind of we discussed, um, I had to just kind of add an umbrella term towards the end. Uh, so for, as an example, of course, this is just something that you, you all agree on in work group, is, uh, you know, or similar uses, something that doesn't pigeonhole too much for planning, but something that, for example, those, uh, terms that, you know, you had just mentioned, that can fall, I mean, we understand those fall into a clinic-type definition.
Right.
Um, because without listing out, because we can list out everything, which is a little too detailed, um, so kind of adding an umbrella term towards the end.
So adding, and maybe adding those and then saying, or similar uses, and then not involving overnight housing of patients?
Yeah.
Yep? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. One down, sixty-seven to go. Okay, good. All right. Um, then the next one that we had, unless you guys have got one, would be, um, clustering. We wanted to look at that. A development design technique that concentrates buildings in specific areas on the site to allow the remaining land to be used for recreation, common open space, and preservation of environmentally sensitive features. This kind of indicates that we're working towards preservation of environmentally sensitive features, and there's really more to this than that. The first one I would say is stormwater retention is a big one, because sometimes we'll move things around to allow a swale to go in, or like where you get, um, a big situation was down in the Trip property, where we did a lot of mitigation, where all of this was done off-site. So you have those types of situations, too. And so, um, at a minimum, I'd like to see stormwater retention added. What else are you thinking?
Um, the, I, for me, initially, when we were discussing, I was kind of curious as to why we had preservation of environmentally sensitive features. That was something I wasn't sure about. And then I was discussing it with, uh, our assistant planner, Nick, and, um, as we were discussing it this morning, or yesterday morning a little bit, um, it, he brought to my attention that that refers to ECO standards. So I, uh, because initially, I was thinking that we could remove that, but, uh, after review, I think that is good to keep in there, because that does refer to our ECO standards, as in, if the site has a lot of ECO on it, where you can't do a full development, but there's enough room to do, uh, like say, a cottage cluster, or clustering of building structures in one portion that's outside of the ECO, uh, that still allows that site to be developable, um, or allow the site to be developed, uh, without encroaching into our ECO.
So would everybody be okay with adding stormwater retention after common open space, and then following up with and preservation of environmentally sensitive features? Or do you think that needs to be separated out more? Everybody okay with that?
I think that concentrates buildings in specific areas on the site.
To allow the remaining land to be used for recreation, comma, open space, comma, stormwater retention, comma. I guess it could say, or preservation of environmentally sensitive features? That work? Rather than and?
No, I think the and is necessary. It's, so it's all-inclusive.
And/or?
Well, I wouldn't do and/or. Uh, just and is.
Okay.
My suggestion.
All right. I would agree with that.
Okay. Paul, you're the wordsmith. What do you think?
Yeah, that looks okay to me.
Okay, great. Okay, and, um, common courtyard is okay, right? Okay, here we go. Common wall. Before you get too excited about this, the only thing I would say here is to just spell out twenty-five percent, the way we've done in the rest of the code, which would be like, twenty-five percent and then spell out twenty-dash-five percent. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good to see you.
So commercial amusements, the next one.
Isn't, on those, on those numbers, isn't it usually, I'd have to track it down elsewhere, but isn't it usually, uh, twenty-five percent in text, and then the numeric twenty-five in parentheses? I think that's the format.
So we do a parentheses with the twenty-five?
Yeah.
Sign? Yeah, and then close the percent, and then close the, um...
Typically, typically, for grammatical purposes, the twenty-five percent is spelled out first, and then the numerical in brackets, twenty-five, and then the percent symbol inside brackets.
Right. And I don't know if we have it that way or the other way, but we certainly have it as what you're stating, yes. The percent sign, and then you're good. Thank you, sir. Okay. Um, okay, commercial amusement. This one's confusing to me. Pool halls, bowling alleys, theaters, arenas, and auditoriums. I knew where I'm going with this, is, let me get into entertainment. It seems like they cross over a little bit. So if you run down in your book and you look at entertainment, in there, we've got, "Commercial or nonprofit enterprise, including but not limited to amusement parks, multiple-screen theaters, museums, stadiums, zoos, and other similar uses but not casinos. Major entertainment facilities often have a fee or age restriction for admission to generate significant traffic impact in comparison to a minor entertainment facility."
So it almost seems like the...
Why do we have then, "commercial amusement" then? It's spelled out somewhere else.
It, it seems to me that the commercial amusement has more of a direct, uh, participation element rather than more passive entertainment element, meaning auditoriums and things of that nature might be involved for sports and that sort of thing. Pool halls, you're actively involved, whereas a theater or auditor, or, uh, excuse me, a theater or, um, arena, maybe not so much. You don't do any gladiatorial sparring anymore, as far as I'm aware.
But I guess I would say, like, okay, so if I'm an outdoor concert venue, where do I land?
Entertainment, I would imagine. Whereas, uh, commercial amusement, in this case, seems more pool hall, bowling alley, auditorium, maybe, community center, or whatever, something along those lines. That's like a, it's paid use.
I think auditorium's the one that kind of hangs me up maybe a little bit, because how big can an auditorium be?
Well, I'm wa, I'm wondering if the entertainment facility major and entertainment facility minor is actually all-inclusive, and the commercial amusement might make reference to those two sections. In other words, "Commercial amusement uses, uses that include commercial recreational uses such as pool halls, bowling alleys, theaters, arenas, and auditoriums, please see," in, in brackets, "please see entertainment facilities major and entertainment facilities minor" as a further definition, a further, let's say, um, explanation of what a commercial amusement is. Because I think it's, it's going to be either major or minor entertainment facility.
In, in what I understand, reading this, it is similar to what you had just mentioned, uh, Kevin, is that this is a descriptor rather than a use. So they have it as a use, but if you're looking at, say, if you're looking at major or minor, that, well, I'm doing, you know, entertainment, uh, commercial amusement, that doesn't fit in here. We have a term for it. Uh, it's a term that someone comes to you. You'll notice that throughout our definitions, there's a couple like that, where you'll note, you won't notice those definitions as a use, per se, but it's a definition for a term that someone may come in and use. So we have several of those kind of throughout. So that's kind of how I'm looking at this, where it would fall under a, you know, major or minor amusement, rather than its own individual quote-unquote use. Uh, it's more of a descriptive area.
Right, but I guess, I guess my question to you is, is there something in here that you think needs to be moved from one to the other? Is there something from major or minor that needs to go to commercial, or something from commercial that needs to go to major or minor?
Let me dovetail on that and say that all of the types of entertainment that are listed in major and minor, those two sections, are all commercial amusement. So that's why I say that those sections are directly related.
Well, they are, but there's some we allow in some places and some that we don't.
But just as a definition, I think connecting them would, would help. Anyway, that's my three cents.
I think rather than moving one thing over to another, I think of almost connecting them in a sense of, like, having a parentheses, "see entertainment facility."
Okay.
Type thing. I think that would be useful, uh, rather than completely removing it and adding it into one of those, because I think that thing gets into, okay, now we're going to sit here and figure out which ones of these fall under. Where, in my opinion, looking at major and minor, minor is a small scale, if you put into, say, a complex somewhere, where a major is a standalone, where like a bowling alley typically is a standalone, but, you know, large enough facility, you could put that into, say, a corner of a complex somewhere, you know, to add some of those in other locations where they're like a basement or something. So that's kind of one where it can sit at both. Typically, it's a standalone, but it can also be added in. It's where I think that's where, if we're trying to figure out how it fits, that would, um, kind of get us into, back us into a corner a little bit, rather than, hey, here's more information on these, and I can do that.
Okay.
Um, Chair?
Yes.
Do we have to take a look at the process first, to look at the code and see if there's full attachments to any of these categories?
Most of these do not, are not attached. They're just straight up.
Okay.
Some you'll notice are uses, for example, the next one, community service use, that is a use that you will see in the code, in a table, in the tables. Um, but some, for example, commercial amusement is a term that is defined, rather, the entertainment facilities major or minor, that is a use that's referenced in the tables.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I think we're footballing that one back to you, in case you're going to change it. Okay. All right. Next one would be, "Community service use." Oh, sorry, problem. Was there something we were missing in there?
Um, this is one that we wanted to, when we were discussing, bring to everybody, because this is a use, you'll notice a couple of these that are kind of similar in a sense, where community service use, residential use, uh, and personal use. These are basically directly out of the ORS. Uh, they're somewhat complicated, uh, in jurisdiction, uh, because it doesn't get any spiritual when you look at the ORS. So that's like, why, what, where you're discussing, that's how everybody discusses it, basically. If you all see anything that needs to be edited, changed, you move it back.
See anything? No? Okay. Paul, you okay out there?
Yep.
All right. Then we move on to corporate headquarters. So this is an interesting one. "A complex of buildings whose purpose is to be administrative center for business enterprise. Corporate headquarters may include ancillary services for office workers such as restaurant, coffee shop, newspaper, or candy stand, childcare facilities." Okay, so, this question is, what is a corporate headquarters today? Um, I guess my thought was, a corporate headquarters may have small production going on, may have some storage, some inventory in there. You've got a lot of small businesses, and do they really have a separate nerve center away from everything else that they're doing? A lot of them, they may have their whole operation on one site, right?
I, it could be. I think that's where that differentiates between a, like a specific use, where a headquarters is, I'm reading this, is supposed to be specifically for office use.
Or in such.
That's a corporate headquarters, where if you're doing any sort of manufacturing or production onsite, that turns you, now you're doing a production, where your accessory use is office, rather than the primary use being office, uh, where there is no accessory use of production. If you're production with accessory use of office, or office space alone, with accessory uses of storing things that are un, that are separate than, you know, hazardous materials, products, things of that nature, outside of a typical office.
Sure.
Question?
Yes, sir.
If I own a corporation, actually, which I do, and I work from home, is this my home a corporate headquarters?
Do want to specify residential.
So, in that, in that context, your home, you're basically running a home occupation, which there's specific requirements to a home occupation outside of a corporate headquarters, which in this, in how we define in the code, is my mindset when I think of a corporate headquarters, I mainly go very large, of course, I go on a Google, right? It's a massive, they're creating a product, but it's technical, it's all, they're not having outside, they're not bringing microchips and stuff like that. Or compared to, like, Intel, their corporate headquarters will be separate then, where they do their production of the plant, where they, where they produce the chips and manufacturing. That's a manufacturing plant, where the headquarters is where they do all the numbers and do all that sort of thing. Because even testing would fall under a different atmosphere, uh, or different, uh, use. So for you, for example, Chris Minkoff, is that you're, you're running, it's a home occupation, your house is the address for your business, you are able to do so within our regulations, uh, of the code.
Corporate, uh, corporate headquarters is a post office, in the Bahamas for tax purposes.
Okay, and so, um, would we allow a food cart?
Food cart, that falls very much within, uh, food vendor. So they, and for example, food carts on seven, that is a completely different use, that is not considered a corporate headquarters.
No, 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 a temper, a temporary ancillary service.
Like on their property?
Right.
In the parking lot?
A food cart that comes there at noon.
Uh, we do not have, uh, we do not permit. So you keep an eye.
You're talking, I'm going to say back in the day when I, before all the food carts, we used to have a, there was a company that would supply, a truck would come in with all the stuff, they'd sell, sell your lunch and stuff, and then they'd move out for that specific time.
Like a death truck?
Yeah, basically.
Yeah.
Basically.
But it's a little, it would be a food truck today.
Yeah.
Preparing lunch.
They still do that.
Yeah.
In some industrial location. Uh, that, I don't believe would fall under, uh...
Ancillary services?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that would be a mobile food vendor.
Right.
Because you're not...
They're a vendor, not a...
Yeah.
There is a food vendor mobile.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We're stringing right along.
Uh, Chair, actually, we'd like to point out, FMA, uh, on cottage cluster, there is another, just, uh, consistency difference there, the nine hundred square feet, if we, again, for the sake of cohesion, want to spell that out and then put the nine... The nine hundred square feet, if we, again, for the sake of cohesion, wanna spell that out and then put the nine hundred number in parentheses under the cottage cluster section.
All right, so it looks like we're clear as to eat. Okay. And this is where it gets interesting, okay, eating and drinking establishments. This seemed to be a bit redundant. Um, because we're talking about primarily engaged in serving alcoholic beverages, which really that many places aren't. Only bars and taverns, that's their primary function, right? And so we kind of say that, and then we say that again, because we have bars and taverns in there where other establishments primarily engage in serving alcoholic beverages. So we're looking at, um, stopping it or other establishments. Or other similar establishments, how's that? That be all right Dakota?
Hmm.
Okay. That work? Okay. And then getting rid of primarily engaged, serving alcoholic beverages. Okay.
Is there a chat feature in this Zoom?
No, why?
Okay, just wondered. Well, getting, getting back to the corporate headquarters, I, I like what Investopedia, how they define it. I think it's, it's extremely clear, but I just thought I would throw it in the chat and there isn't any chat, so. We can move on.
The chat kind of gives us some challenges for public meeting laws.
Ah, okay.
What's that?
Just verbalize it?
Yeah, you could verbalize it if you want to.
Well, what I, yeah, thank you. Um, it just says, a corporate headquarters may be a single building or campus of buildings that serve as a home for a corporation's executive, managerial, human resources, corporate communications, legal, and accounting teams, as well as its main support teams and staff.
Whoa. It's too detailed?
No, I think, cause I, what he's reading, um, looking through, for example, the examples that we have as our current definition.
Right.
I mean, to me, a restaurant, you could do that there, then you're catering, that's where your team's based out of.
Right.
So I think these sorts of things can fall, for example, I used to work at, that's what I was talking about, it was back in the day. And we had our own separate headquarters.
Uh huh.
They weren't producing any of the coffee there, but that's where they did all the other assets.
Administrative stuff.
Yeah, that's where you had your, your HR, that's where you had, you know, the franchisee, that's where his office was, managers, have meetings, things of that nature in that location.
Do you guys like that better for corporate headquarters?
I.
I liked Kevin's better.
Pardon me?
I liked Kevin's better than what we have.
Yes, I do too.
I do think the detailed additions is helpful.
Kevin wins, okay.
Thanks Kevin.
Not trying to win, just trying to help.
All right, um, okay, so we did eating and drinking, and now we're entertainment facility major. Okay, so the real question is, are we missing something? Is there something we need to add or delete?
Would, and I'm just throwing this out here, would like a carnival that comes into town, is that considered? Since it's temporary.
That's a temporary use, right?
Yeah, like the high school has one every spring.
Yeah, that's a permit that they would come, that they would, that they receive, uh, if they were to do like the Six Flags or something, you know, something of that scale. Then that would fall more, so that's a permanent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are, are, did we skip, or did we finish with eating and drinking establishments, I'm sorry?
We did, I thought.
Okay, so primarily engaged in serving is just, we're just gonna remove that, okay, that's good, all right.
Okay.
Okay, we're on to entertainment.
So major to minor, uh, is really kind of subjective, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And you have a difference.
Major to minor is size.
You have a different set of criteria there.
Is limited traffic or significant traffic? I guess that's what we put into it.
Yeah, could we add outdoor concert venues to entertainment facility major, maybe?
Um, we haven't put it down here, I wanna see how we are currently doing that, cause I haven't been around for the concert series that goes on. Um, so I'll see how we currently are doing that.
What do you mean how you're doing it?
Uh, I, I'm not sure, cause I, I don't do here, if or how they do things with, uh, for, for Edgefield. I'm not sure what kind of purpose they do, or what that falls under currently, uh, cause I have not been here, that's, I haven't had to deal with that yet. So that's something I can look into, or will be done in the past, and how we've gone through that, I'm not sure if it falls into a different category. Um, so, uh, we don't put it in twice, but if it doesn't.
Right, this would be a good spot.
Right, spot for it. Uh, but yeah, so I can put it right here, and then I'll check in and see how it works.
And an Edgefield concert is major, but historical society concert is minor, right?
Mm-hmm.
There's, there's quite a difference.
I'm looking primarily at Edgefield, just because, I mean, it needs to be looked at through a traffic lens.
Right. But that kind of goes back to the significant or limited traffic.
Yeah. Not that I'm opposed to it, cause I'm not, but it's just.
Sure.
I just wanted to avoid.
Yeah.
Um, historical society does a concert, twenty people show up and we go, whoa, you gotta do all these requirements.
Right. Okay, and so if we go to minor, I think we're kind of at the same thing.
You know, concerts that are, are described as, that would be considered a minor, that's a temporary to run, consistently throughout.
Separated, limited, small number of people.
So where would adult entertainment go?
Do we allow it?
Presently?
Presently, it's not, not, not allowed.
I imagine.
No, it isn't.
No, it is allowed.
I would say it would go in minor, correct?
Small scale theaters type, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it might go in flex space.
That's great. Um. Would we be willing to do a casino type disclaimer? And say similar uses, um, other than adult entertainment?
Would we create another independent? I guess definition that would include casinos and adult entertainment, or?
No, we would be excluding.
Um, what, what, what you're saying is, I don't know if we need necessarily for casinos, cause I feel like that's pretty self-regulated, but adult entertainment might need it.
I guess that's what I'm.
Write a definition, but then also put it under here as an exclusion.
Yeah. Right.
You're, you're getting into first, first amendment issues with that one. Which is well established in Oregon.
I know, um.
Well, was that, there was a bunch of hoopla about somebody wanting to do a casino in Wood Village, remember that?
Right.
Yeah, it was over, it was where the dog trap was.
Uh huh.
Yeah, there was a, a vote that came up and didn't, didn't pass.
Right.
So there's some rules right now as to where and where not it can be.
Right, and the only reason I would say, I actually thought that, Paul, and I looked at a number of jurisdictions kind of have it lined out. Adult entertainment. And they may be in the wrong side of the box. Or possibly something's different than what I'm aware of.
I'm not sure, that's something I'd have to look into, uh, do some research on.
Okay.
Uh, as far as who's effects, we have a list of, uh, whenever we compareables for our city, we have a list of similar sized cities and what they do. Kind of go from that similar, what we gave with the variance research.
Can we ask legal about that and see what they say? That be okay, Paul?
Sure. I, I had a question on another, uh, venue type place, uh, where would you classify something like the, uh, I guess I would describe it as an entertainment center, uh, the one on, down on I five in Wilsonville, where they have mini golf and, uh, go-karts, and I don't know what, what else, what all else is there, but it's pretty, pretty good sized complex for outdoor entertainment. Where, where would that fall in here?
It could be Bullwinkle's.
Yeah.
And I actually think that would fall into almost like an amusement park on a small scale.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'd say so too.
I know.
If something like that were coming out, I would look at that as a major entertainment.
Yeah. Okay. Financial institution. Not be confused with a regular institution. Okay, bank credit union or similar entity that is licensed to deposit or manage money or other financial products for customers. Financial institutions have a presence within a building or a standalone. This is where I got hung up, is an automated teller machine is a financial institution?
Technically, cause it has money in it. And it distributes money, that would probably why they did that.
It's associated with that.
Yeah, because when you put your card in, you get money out, it's a, um, you can do just about anything on a ATM deposit.
Well, it, it seems to me that the institution is the bank, it's not the ATM machine. So if Wells Fargo has an ATM machine, the financial institution is Wells Fargo. Not the, not the ATM that sits out, uh, you know, in front of Gresham Golf Course in their parking lot, that's not a financial institution.
What, what about this? May have a presence within a building or as a standalone facility. It also may be an automated teller machine.
Well, no, I still have the same problem. It, the ATM itself is not a financial institution, it operates that ATM.
Used to the financial institution use, so would be considered an accessory, cause not every bank needs that ATM. Uh, but it's, it's considered an accessory to the primary use. So that's why it would fall within the same.
Do we need to have a separate definition for ATM, because we'd allow ATMs in other places, right?
Typically in parking lots.
Yeah, you're putting an ATM in a kiosk in a parking lot, and you wouldn't put a bank in a kiosk in a parking lot, it'd be on a path.
Yeah, there are similar requirements for like an ATM, they do have to be lit, padded, uh, if you're removing products, or for example, where you put a large parking spot, you remove the parking space, you need to make sure you still need parking requirements for the overall. Uh, so there are certain requirements that come with a, putting like an ATM kiosk in, in a parking lot. Um, I don't know if you needed, do the ATMs, pretty, uh, like self-explanatory, I think it's more or less of borderfalls within the use category, so like a financial institution, it's a commercial use, so you're not gonna see that, you're not gonna see ATMs being put in, I don't think, currently I put it as a law for, uh, that kind of a use within industrial. They would have to be within commercial, and it wouldn't be allowed within residential. Uh, for example, you don't see a parking complex that have the ATM, and they're gonna have a sense of mixed use, cause then you could have a bank on the ground floor type thing. So I don't know if a, a separate definition is necessary, maybe if it, it re-creased a reward in, in a way. Um, that would be probably a better bet than pulling a separate definition out.
Well, it's not exactly immaterial, cause we do, um, have high level of response to ATM type areas just due to keeping framework down, right? So it does attract an extra attention from the city, you know, you can protect that.
I'm not sure, cause I haven't looked into this really, probably.
I think, I, I think an easy way to fix this is to simply say, financial institutions may have a presence within a building and may operate standalone automated teller machines.
Okay.
That would.
Yep. Okay. Here we go. Here's a good one. Human services.
Somebody's just spelled operate pretty badly.
Yeah, I'm typing right.
Okay.
I'll work on that, this is just, this is my notes.
It's late and he's young, what can we say?
Trying to type quick and keep everything moving.
All right. Do we have any issues with this?
Which one are you on again?
Human.
Human services.
What was our issue with this?
Um.
Or was there one?
This is the same thing that we discussed about community services, um, where this is basically plugged straight from the ORS.
Okay.
And it kind of goes with personal services, uh, or like a residential facility, whereas this, uh, human services is based purely, it's basically a, the size of the, the number of people in which you're, obviously, cause you could do it in a residential, potentially depending on the, the zone, this is the side, like, you know, which, which residential area to do in commercial. So it's, it kind of depends on the size and the number, and that is something that's directly related to the ORS and what the state has in their, uh, guidelines. Um, like I said, everywhere I've ever worked, this has always kind of been a part of the topic of discussion, just basically for how to govern it. Um, because it's, uh, it can be a bit confusing, where really it's looking at the state and then the use itself is just showing work. That's kind of encompassed a lot within, uh, the use itself.
Okay. So is there something you'd like to see?
No.
No, 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 I've gotten used, I've gotten used to it.
You're a flexible individual.
I got a question about junkyard. It says, a lot for dismantling or wrecking of motor vehicles or storage or keeping of junk, including scrap metals or other scrap metals. Why do we have to have other scrap metals in there?
It says scrap materials, which could.
Well, but materials and scrap metal, most scrap material is metal.
Is metal.
But if there's, I mean, they, they may require some other scrap ma, material, like wood or something, but.
Scrap is really anything you can get money out of, right?
Yeah. Okay, well, didn't leave it, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I guess the question is. I guess the question is, you know, of junk? What is junk?
That's the car my son drives.
I mean, do we need to find junk, are we okay? Or figure out what junk is?
Oh, junk, I mean, anything you don't use or have no use for.
Specify any like
Do we want to put in there, it could be a vehicle that your child drives, okay?
Do we want to specify anything like non-hazardous, or do we need to maybe state that, just, I mean, I know obviously there's state requirements and things like that in place for hazmat and whatnot, but
It really does a volume and quantity type equation.
Right, like oil and that kind of stuff that can
Things I cherish my wife calls junk, but I don't like that.
You okay with it?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Uh, that's a good, that's a good question, that's more, that goes into their state guidelines they have to follow. Depending on what kind of junk yard, if it's like a wrecking yard.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
At the junkyard, they have uh, environmental state guidelines, they have the ball, or how they, you know, for any area, uh, and then yeah, as far as like hazardous type things, it's like our gun and gas and things like that, they have.
Gotcha.
Those are special locations.
Isn't there something as to where you're located in relation to the water table and that sort of thing?
Yeah, exactly. And then those are all, that's all done by the state, like, so that's, as, as Oregon, we're very protective of our water. Um, so, uh, yeah, you're not gonna be able, basically if it's an area that's already a brown field, they'll probably be more likely, but hey, that's, you can't do it there. Um, that's why you don't really see too many junkyards leave. Where if there's ones, most junkyards you know have been there forever. And more likely, it's very difficult for them to, if they do sell or leave, they clean it up.
You are.
Nothing is really gonna build there, because it's very difficult to make that, it's a very big process for the
Uh, Chair.
Yes.
Uh, when we, actually circling back to fueling station, I just had a quick question on that, I, is there is there another definition uh, somewhere throughout here or one needed or anything for the electric charging stations, which are currently, like, not included with fueling stations, like meaning it obviously is excluding certain types of charging stations that seem like they're maybe in conjunction with another piece of property, like if they have complimentary charging, like a grocery store or something, for example. But we also see they do have like separate, you know, allocated spaces for that, uh, both on the property and you know, I mean, you have the Tesla superchargers right here in the trial Dell, for example, so I, obviously with the continuation of cars being constantly coming and going, especially out as far as we are, um, and then the emphasis both from the government and, you know, generically, when it comes to moving towards electric vehicles supposedly. Um, is there something that we should lay out as far as terms to like specify additional chargings, like charging station instead of fueling station?
Since you're in this business, I'll ask you, okay, most of these, right, you pull in and you're there for typically, how long?
Uh, I mean, if you have like a level three high power charger, you could be there as little as five, 10 minutes. Uh, if it's like a level two, lower voltage, uh, you could be there, you know, 45 minutes to an hour potentially, like depending on how much of a charge a car needs. If they're, I mean, again, we're kind of at the edge of town. So say somebody's coming from down the river and they need, you know, they're running out of charge from coming from the dolls or whatever. Um, and they need a charge here, then it's gonna be a little bit of a longer wait time if it's not like a really high powered charger.
So when we put these in, do we put in three or two or one?
That's up to whoever's coming in and doing the development.
Okay.
Uh, so currently right now, we don't have anything in our code, uh, for that. Uh, it's, it's basically, like, you know, as you mentioned, they're, we're located in uh, parking lots. Typically for it's like, oh, you can, because it's a, it's a parking, and it's, oh, you happen to have that, where they just go through a site development to make sure they can do the, do the construction itself.
But we require them now, when you put in a parking lot, you have to put in charging.
So we do
But we don't have it in our code, like, we don't have it
It's a new state mandate.
It's, it's a state mandate.
So we should add it to the code?
I think so, uh, because it is if they're in a fueling station.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I mean, it
It can be.
It's its own thing, that you're not dealing with the same environmental stuff, with electricity that you deal with. Oils and gases.
But it can be, it can be environmental too, because, I mean, not the charging station itself, but cars that pull in there, I mean.
Well, except for electric cars.
Well, electric cars don't typically catch on fire, but you never know, and you can't, typically can't put them out.
Oh, yeah, it's a different, so it's got its own unique, different
Right, so they have the unique set of rules that go with that.
Yeah.
Like you wouldn't park, put a charging station on a grass.
And you probably wouldn't put a charging station next to a fueling pump either.
No.
I mean, they do that all over the place, I'll be honest, like I just, I got back from Iceland and every single gas station had a separate section on the side, like you would see like the fill up air tires, instead it's a charging bank for electric
But it's away from the actual
Yeah, it's not, it's not in the same like line, but it's on the same lot. Um, in those cases.
Question I'd have is and this is looking way down the road, would we foresee something where the fuel pumps all come out and charging stations go in? And you still have the convenience store and
I can see that.
That whole concept.
I mean, if, if Loves was smart, they'd probably add electric charging to that, to that standard that's right off the freeway there. Like, for example, so we could potentially see that, I don't know if we're ever really gonna see complete replacement in our lifetime, but you know, it's a possibility for sure.
Especially with truck, with large semi trucks now coming out.
Yeah. Electric as well, yeah.
So do we want to say? Do we want a separate one, or do we want to add that into a fueling station?
Um, I don't want to add it to fueling station, because that mean, to me, a fueling station is a stand, it's a standalone use.
Okay.
Uh, where a fueling station can add charging station. But I think we should have a definition for a charging station as its own. Uh, because if fueling stations as our, as our, as uses go within our use table, are specific on where you can and cannot put them. But right now, we don't have a definition for a charging station. But when people do come in, okay, I'd like to, I want to put a charging station in this parking lot, say, say down at the, you know, the company stores down there. That would be permitted
Right.
To do so, where a fueling station that, definitely not okay.
But couldn't a fueling station obtain fuel or?
Electric.
That's why you could do, you could do a fueling station with electric, but you can't do an electric, a charging station with it.
So if it's a standalone charging station, it's standalone, period. It's nothing, I mean, they can have a store and all that, but they can't have a fueling station.
Exactly, yeah, uh, because that opens up where charging stations, I mean, for example, for those that do have electric vehicles, your home is a charging station, you know, you plug it in at home type thing, uh, not now, it's not, that's going way out of what we're actually talking about, but compared to, we're not going to allow a fueling station to be put right in smack dab of residential or right in smack dab of commercial, because those are very specific on where they can and can't go based on state guidelines. Where charging stations are a little bit more free, uh, you know, you can put them right on the sidewalk, uh, like, where you like to have downtown. Um, because you just, where you can park your car, anywhere you can park your car, technically have a fueling station. As long as the power grid a lot, that's also, that goes more deep into it. So you can have one without the other, but then one could have, yeah, so it's kind of a one-way street there. Um, where, where fueling stations can have charging, but charging cannot have fuel.
Yeah, if I have a fueling station, I could add charging.
Exactly.
Right.
If I have charging, I can't just automatically, I get to add
I would very think tank
You've got the ability to add it, so it kind of covers it. Okay.
So we could add a definition, because right now we do not have a definition.
Correct.
That's something we can work on.
Supersumption. Definition.
Okay, we're personal. Okay, personal services.
I don't know what you mean by similar types of uses. I mean, I, I have problems with the word uses.
We're not laughing at you.
And that's a good point.
That's a really good point.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Especially when you read through this, okay. Such as barber shop, hair salon, masseuse.
Nail care salon.
Nail care.
Do we have to say excluding adult entertainment?
Well, it's not per, that's not personal services, unless you're like Mustang Ranch or something.
Well, if you're talking massage.
But that would be adult, I believe.
I don't, I mean
What?
No, they're not, they do have.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Falls under the umbrella term of just crying.
Okay, and so similar types of uses, and you're saying we might want to detail that out a little bit? Commissioner Wilcox?
I just don't like the word use in there at all. One, uh, service I think you're missing that should be included, so popular now is uh, tattoo parlors.
That's kind of what, um, what we were, uh, Chair and I were discussing a little bit, it's just uh, there's also other things such as cosmetic tattooing or eyebrows, facials, things of that nature that we don't have deliberately laid out within this definition. And that's why I was thinking there's another type of umbrella term we can add at the end, so we don't just create a longer list of this, 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 this.
You could use the previously used, uh, including but not limited to, I think, just kind of
Okay, yeah, I like that.
Instead of such as.
Okay.
How does that sound, Paul?
That feel all right?
Blink twice if you can hear us.
He can hear us, he's thinking. What do you think?
I'll, I'll have to review it in print.
Okay. All right, um, I think that helps. Okay, and uh, professional services. Office containing the activities such as those of a lawyer, architect, engineer, accountant, artist, teacher, real estate, or insurance.
I think the same thing pertains, just like personal services. An office containing the activities. Uh, including but not limited to lawyer, architect, engineer, accountant, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A couple that I think are real popular now are financial advisor.
Right, well, you're, yes. How about uh, artificial intelligence consultant?
Financial.
That, that doesn't pertain to anybody on this committee.
I would say, I would think though, financial advisors are real popular.
Right.
I like Edward Johnson, those kind, yeah. Or like, um, tax, tax repairs and stuff like that.
We can't say consultant, right, because that can really open the door.
Right.
I guess you could say consultants, professional office. Right?
I mean, the way I look at it, that's why initially I had there is potentially add with, just combined with office, because what really separates office, if we have definition for office from professional office, uh, in my, and again, this is just a very major question. Uh, to my mindset, whenever you have an office, it should be professional, right, typically, I mean, de- depending on however you run your office is your own way, but um, do we need to separate out professional office?
Yeah, what's the real difference here?
They're not limited to certain administrative professional services. And then it goes mostly into clinics listed.
Yeah, this takes care of, this moves the clinics out, which is okay, because we've got them someplace else.
Yeah.
Right.
Um. Indoor setting with no retail presence, and then I think we should put in there such as. Right?
Yeah, under which, which definition?
You could do it all under office, right, or under professional office?
Obviously under office.
Okay, under office.
You could do that, yeah.
No retail presence, such as you know, lawyer, architect, engineer, accountant, financial advisor, teacher.
Or to Kevin's earlier point, I mean, keeping this includes but is not limited to, and then just the rest of the professional office, right? Activities such as those offered, yeah.
List those out and then
Yeah.
And with. Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, there really any difference in clientele or activity between those two? Seems thin line.
That's why we're combining them.
Yeah. I guess it could fall.
You could put it under office.
Where, where, yeah, where would you like it to be at the end, or would you like it to be at the end tomorrow, I was trying to get it added here. Only thing
I was thinking in the middle. And then finishing up with professional services, medical services, clinics, and veterinary clinics.
Are we keeping the clinics in there? I thought we were removing it, because the clinics is already its own.
Well, clinics fall also under, under office, just because if you have a clinic in
So you kind of have them
Okay, so you do say clinics, okay.
Clinics are more separated out as a term.
Got it, okay.
Uh, we, we don't call out clinics specifically, right, we're, we're often, we do call out offices, right.
And we're saying, this includes but not limited to, and then I thought you should kind of spell out those ones that you have that include financial advisor. Such as but not limited to. Right? And then spell those
Including, including but not limited to.
Right. There you go. Okay.
So those two. I've got another odd one for you guys.
What's that?
Down by the State Farm office at the corner of 257th and Historic Highway. Used to be a fortune teller next door. Where would you put that? Personal services?
Yeah.
Good bum reading, sure.
Yeah.
Personal.
Okay, just, I was just curious.
Right.
It's kind of a combined use because you get your fortune told and then you figure out if you need to go see the insurance person or not.
Good point.
Sorry, I couldn't resist. Okay.
Then you see your financial planner.
Yeah, you go see the financial guy after that. Okay, and then retail. A place of sale to the ultimate customer for direct consumption and not for resale.
It says consume, not consume.
I'm sorry, ultimate consumer.
Yeah, retailer versus wholesale, right?
Yeah, but retail's, that's a pretty small definition for retail, really. Retail can be a lot of things.
Shall we go back to Investopedia?
Well, a place of sale to the ultimate consumer.
What's an ultimate consumer?
Person buying it.
Yeah, in other words, it's not wholesale.
Right, so you're not reselling.
Right.
Exactly, and you're saying that there, not for resale. Add not wholes, I see, add not wholesale, remove not for resale. A place of sale to the ultimate, to the end user. I think instead of ultimate consumer, normally it's, it's stated as end user. A place of sale to the end user for direct consumption. Period, not wholesale.
I was, I was gonna say, when you have the word consumer and consumption. That's kind of redundant. So I like Kevin's, I like Kevin's suggestion, end user rather than, because not, not, not everything is for consumption.
Right, what about this? A place of sale. Of food or non-food products.
Well, that's everything. Place of, of.
Not everything.
Well, goods and services. A place of sale of goods or services to the end user for direct consumption. Not wholesale.
I would say that covers it.
I'm not sure about the services part.
Yeah, I have trouble with that, too.
I mean, it's goods.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, you don't consume services necessarily.
And you don't resell services.
Well, you can.
Goods.
You can resell services because what you're doing is you're brokering services. Is the resale of services.
But that's not selling it to the ultimate consumer.
Right, right, so.
Picks it out.
A place of sale.
Sale of goods to the end user.
For direct consumption.
Okay.
Yeah. Not wholesale.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because I, in my personal opinion, the fact that we have, I, I agree with having consumer and consumption is redundant. And then not for resale, I think kind of. Well, well known, it's implied. It just, I don't really like the not for resale thing. But it just, I just feel like it kind of ties hands, not on myself, but if someone's reading that, it's just kind of like at the end. So I, I like this, how this sounds better, in my opinion.
Okay.
And just putting not wholesale as just, you know, laying out.
For resale, I like it better.
Okay. And then I think we need to add a definition for a gym, workout facility. All those types of things. We don't have one.
Well, just case here, wholesale, I mean, it could be a distributor, it could be a wholesaler, whatever.
Right.
Do we run into trouble by being that specific?
No, because we directly call out wholesale within our code. Where this is just a def. Just setting it off to the side. Because I mean, if you really, if you want to dive really deeply into it. If I'm running a concession stand at the, at the high school. And you run out of a box of stickers, I'm gonna run over, grab a box of stickers. But that's kind of a different type of thing going on there. Because you're not always, you know, that's just in your pinch where you're not going to be selling something as, for retail. To someone who's going to be doing wholes, you know, who's going to, just to a distributor. Because then you're selling it wholesale to a distributor to then go out and distribute and then they sell. So I think that's why we have that differentiated. So I think it's okay that a retail use is not wholesale. Because they have wholesale, which is a separate use. So I think it's okay that we had it specific like that. That won't tie our hands as well.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
And the other thing is.
It was already in there, not for resale, which is the same concept. I just liked it, I just liked it more better.
But if you're a retailer and you're looking to go in someplace, you're gonna see whether wholesale is allowed or not. And resale is allowed because it's gonna affect your decision. Okay. Next one I had was site and design review. Do you want to talk about that? Just fix it. Site and design. Okay. All right. Because you guys are site and design review. Lucky. We have in here, site and design review committee, a committee chaired by the director to review applicable development proposals for compliance to the provisions of this code. Sounds a lot like planning commission. But often there's a design review committee that looks strictly at design things. So like sometimes if it's a type two. Some municipalities will send that to design review. It's a separate group and they look at it and they're like, well. And it's not as, it's not quasi judicial. And really, this body has to function as design review at staff's discretion. And the only thing I wonder what this is, do we need to say? What the criteria is? I mean, do we need to say somewhere what the criteria is for that, or?
That's already listed out in the code under types.
Okay, so we're okay.
So that, I think that should be fine, we don't have to list it out because otherwise that would be a big round page. I'm worried, it's really, really wordy. That's why it's listed out. I think it's a page or two under types. And that shows where, and what will go to, and also, I think it's also under applications. Additional use is a type three, that's listed out. And then that goes to planning commission. Where, you know, SDR depends, that's something that depends on whether or not it's going to be a director's review, which is type two. Or a type three planning commission. And if really, type ones, they'll never come to planning commission because they're.
Right.
Type ones, they're, they're very simple.
Do you know of any? Design review boards that are chaired by the director?
No.
Okay.
Know where I've, know where I've been. And I think what that's getting to is. See, site and design review, I think what this is getting to is, site and design review is done by the planning division. Unless it goes to planning commission for approval. That's how I'm kind of reading this. Because technically, all tattoos are. The director is the approving entity, you know, the planners do the work. It's, you know, if anything comes back, it's, that's the director who allowed that to go through that thing. And that's why it's also within there that a director reviews along with the planner, which typically the planner does. If something's like, hey, they're missing a variance on this, or they're missing a major modification that's going to up this to a type three. Then move it up to a type three, but prior to approval. So I think that's kind of what this is getting at. I just think it's worded in a way that's a bit complicated.
Okay, so. What about, so I'll spitball something here. Site and design review committee would be a committee charged with the review of applicable development proposals. Okay. For compliance.
With. For compliance with the provisions of this code.
At the director's discretion. Wouldn't it be?
Um, not all the time.
Okay.
Because director's discretion is only, if, say, they submit a type two and during their review process for completeness, notice that this should be bumped up to a type three, they're missing a variance, or they're missing a major modification, and they're going to need to apply for it. Then that would get bumped up, that's director's interpretation, or discretion. However, if we get a variance application that's over the threshold, that's not, that's not director's. That goes directly, that is a type three. It goes to planning commission for their approval. So I think that's where the discretion part might get a little.
Okay.
Because I don't want someone to read that and say, well, here it shows that it's your discretion to the director. You can choose that this doesn't have to be exactly.
I was trying to be nice and give you some flexibility.
I appreciate that, I just don't want.
Would it be okay if we reworked this and bring it back? Is that all right? Paul, you okay with that?
Uh, sure. I, I had a question though about. Well, how far do you want to go with design in and of itself? Because as far as I know, Troutdale doesn't have any specific design standards as far as, you know, architectural style and that sort of thing. Like, like Sandy does, for example, you know, they have their, they call it their sandy style, I think, is the way they refer to it. But timber and stone kind of architecture, even their gas stations have to have the sandy look.
Troutdale's got stuff for the north side of the highway and for downtown in the overlay. And then for 257th, there's some. Am I missing anything?
Those are the only ones that I know of. And yeah, you are, you are correct, Paul, that there isn't, like, we have obviously for the downtown that is how we do. But yeah, there isn't specific design. Typically, it's usually fairly historic or downtown areas. And we do have some design, you know, requirements as far as, you know, ADUs or if you're going, you're not allowed to have a. For example, you're not allowed to have a frontage of a new structure that is, if it's continuous from 140D, it has to have a bump either in or out. But at least three, four, five, three, four feet, I can't remember off the top of my head. So there's certain design requirements. You know, if you're going to have, you can't have the same pit, the same line roof without having some sort of change in height. Or, if you will, of the roof line. So there are some that are within our development standards. But as far as specific design, it's only for the downtown primarily, and then again, along the, you mentioned, chair. I think also the design is more looking at it as the designs that we currently have rather than of our design standards. Because typically, a whole city won't have full design standards, more sections. For specific colors, for example, we have color requirements for downtown, you know, you can't paint. If you can all the way down to more color white, if you're doing, it has to be a specific color of white. Can't just paint, make sure all white if you want. So I think it's, the design's referring to those kinds, as well as how it fits on-site, the design. Make sure they have the proper frontage, make sure that they are, if they're taking access off of an alley compared to off of a street frontage, how that's going to work, or the parking requirements. That's where I get more into the design portion of how this is.
So if we were.
Eventually, I hope we can get some full on design.
If we were gonna do that, we would probably do it in the form of an overlay, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That work, Paul?
Yeah, that sounds good.
And then maybe it might be something, we'll go out on a limb here. And say that maybe it's something where we might involve like CAC or somebody. That would be a big lift to do that. Might be something that we could do jointly.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll take some research, but I know, for example, my experience when I was with Hillsborough, their architect has been working on design standards for.
Years.
Six years.
Yeah.
And they're, they, you know, they're coming out in small bits, but for the entire city, which is a much larger state. It takes, it's a, it's a heavy lift.
Yeah.
It's only one person. So yeah, I think that's something that potentially coming down, you know, in the future, the joint effort with you would be great.
Okay. Can you ask them next time around if they? That would be something they would consider?
Yeah.
Okay. Weren't you on there?
I'm not.
Okay, well, I'm not talking to you. Don't need talking.
Shelley's been trying to get me on that for a bit, though.
It's called getting drafted.
Yeah, basically.
Paul, are you, no, you're not on CAC, are you?
No.
Okay, what else you got?
Under sufficient infrastructure, do we need to list anything having to do with, like, additional utilities like power? As just like a measure of thoroughness? Or is that like, again, like kind of an ORS, like sort of handled under the blanket, like new construction, and it always obviously is gonna have power, but. Sufficient infrastructure is on the next, so much to do. Under past subdivision.
Okay.
Before townhouse or townhome. It talks about public sewer, public water, access via public or private streets, storm drainage. And I just don't know, I mean, if we need to include some of the other basic things, like I said.
I can answer power, that's, that's kind of.
Given.
Yeah, they need, that's something that, you know, they contact PGE. Yeah, they need, that, that's something that, you know, they contact PG, make sure they pull power, the different requirements. Uh, the things listed here, uh, the items listed here from the code or stuff that we as a city, uh, kind of govern. Um, I mean, for example, you know, we, uh, you know, some trash is not on here. But that's a, that's kind of all the stuff that they're requiring you, but it's not something that we run, that's.
Waste manager.
Waste management.
Yeah, got it.
Uh, so they're required.
Makes sense, thank you.
If the wind blows, it's my house.
I, I've had a place with no public power, just solar and everything, batteries.
Especially with the increase in, uh, E.P. bills going on.
Yeah.
That's, that's the best thing to have.
Should get some wind power going up in here.
Now, we require, you know, the ability to have infrastructure for new development.
Well, come to think of it, places without any public water too. No public power, no public water, well. There was, um, there was, um, I believe it was a river.
Just pull from a river, no well?
No well. They pulled from a river and had solar and only thing that, and it had septic, so there's no connection to anything public.
Guess this does specify specifically larger structures, not necessarily individual residences. Triplex, quadplex, townhouse, cottage cluster, so.
Yeah, that would be harder.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So how are we going to handle, I know it hasn't come down fully yet, but the, um, governor's mandate for commercial to, to a residential use?
Which, um.
The one where you can repurpose a commercial building to residential?
Um, that's not something we haven't discussed yet.
Okay.
Not sure how everyone care about, or how we're able to do that. Um, discussion, well, changes. We'll be discussing as well, cause I'm, changes in the code, so.
Um, the, the thing that I would like you to look at would be the impact on the existing infrastructure. So an example would be, you have a, let's say you have a commercial building that's twenty thousand feet. And it's designed as a commercial building, so it's got like four toilets in it, okay? And all of a sudden you make it apartments, you've got like
Ninety five.
Yeah, thirty toilets in it, as an example. And the main in the street might be twelve inches. How's that work?
Um, as far as I know, what they would, as of right now, they would, they have to bring those standards, um, so they have to make sure that it's able to, um, work within the, uh, with what they've given the infrastructure, they can't just, you know, crazy, I'm not sure also if that will affect us as much as we might under that threshold for how, the size of our city, again, I'm not, I'm not into that.
I think it's ten K. Is that correct, Paul? I thought it was ten K. I know you're a study on this stuff, so put you on the spot.
Um, what's, what's the question again?
Um, the the ability to repurpose a commercial building to residential? I thought it was in municipalities that had ten K or more.
Yeah, it's ten thousand population.
Oh, well.
Sorry. Um, I would just like to make sure that we were, we're addressing infrastructure so that we don't have, uh, a situation where something gets repurposed and then the taxpayers are putting in a new sewer main all the way to the treatment plant.
Again, I, I've read this, so, uh, Paul, feel, please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I, I imagine it's similar to, um, requirements for, uh, like utility undergrounding where that would be on the, uh, developer.
To do it.
That puts the cost to bring the, uh, infrastructure up, up to code. Because just because you're converting a commercial space into residential, that's a change of occupancy which requires, you know, it's a tenant improvement, as far as built now, I'm speaking about building stuff, which again, I'm not an expert when it comes to the building stuff, but what I do know is that requires a change, a tenant improvement to change the occupancy, which means that they have to go through the proper, make sure that it meets residential standards, not commercial services. Uh, so I'm saying that's wall changes, that, I mean, you know, changing the type of fire rating on the walls, stuff of that nature, it's gonna be, you know. I believe that they would have to go fit it, that's on the cost of redevelopment.
I, I would agree with you, it's just there's been some
Yeah.
interesting decisions made lately, and I'd just like to make sure that we're, as a city, we're kind of trying to protect ourselves and our residents from unforeseen costs.
Ten percent.
How's that?
Sound good.
Okay. Alright, and the next thing we have is chapter three, right? Use tables. Okay, so. Um, the next assignment is gonna be looking at the use tables in chapter three. And so we'll do that, uh, next time. So if you can look those over and then we'll get something out to you. Um, it's got some suggestions on it, but really be looking at that thinking, does this make sense here, does this not make sense, that type of.
Thanks to Kevin for putting the updated codes together.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, Victor.
Of course.
Okay, um. Alright. This, um, really appreciate the discussion tonight and everybody's participation, and so with that, we are on to. Mr. Meyer.
Okay, um, I don't have a whole lot, like, of presentation for you. Um, I did, again, there's the, uh, the new codes, if those of you who are not in person, um, I'll bring them next time, or feel free to swing by the, you know, uh, community development office and we'll have them there for you, so it's up to you, whichever one you prefer. Um, the big news that is, uh, that I really have to share is that we have, uh, the city has put out an offer for a new, uh, community development director, and they have accepted. So the new community development director, her name is Erica Palmer. She's coming from Sherwood, she was the planning manager on Sherwood for the past seven years, she previously worked in Fairview, uh, and some of the smallest radio station, there are smaller radio stations prior to that, so she has a knowledge of the area. Um, she's worked out in this area for quite a long time, and so we're really looking forward to having her come on. Uh, I will make sure that, I will be bringing her to our next meeting to introduce herself and meet everyone. Uh, her start date is the twenty second of this month, so she accepted her at the holiday, she had a couple things she's finishing up over at Sherwood, I know they just have done doing a large GGB expansion out there. So, uh, she just wanted to see that through prior to meeting. Um, in my opinion, that shows that she enjoys what she's doing, she doesn't like leaving something halfway done, so. Uh, we're looking forward to having her come in and she'll be making her rounds, saying hi to everybody.
Great, anything else?
That was it, that's, that's the big.
Alright, here we go, and we're starting tonight with Commissioner Wilcox.
Nope, I don't have anything to add.
No? Okay. Commissioner Allen?
Uh, nothing to add.
Okay.
Where do I?
Commissioner Minkoff?
Is it still appropriate to say happy new year?
Yep, it is, it's still a new year.
Okay, happy new year, other than that, nothing, thank you.
Welcome back, by the way.
Yes, good to be back.
Commissioner Priggett.
Uh, just a reminder, if you have a Christmas tree and you put it on the curb, please tie it down, I don't want it in my yard, I've already recycled one. Or donate it to a goat farm, goats love Christmas.
Yeah, you know.
Ended up in the curb.
You have a house up the end of the street that everything come over goes to.
I get everything, Christmas presents, everything.
You get the presents too?
Oh yeah, I've had presents come down.
Anything good?
I had to return them to the house, cause I knew where they came from.
Okay. Alright, um. I actually don't have anything. And our next, when are you looking at the next meeting, are you looking at?
The next meeting would be at you where you're working.
Okay, you guys okay with that?
Would you have a good one of the last meeting was?
It's Valentine's.
Yeah.
But aren't you married?
I am indeed.
Like, you don't have to worry about it then.
Tell us like that, yeah.
I was just wondering if this was the only one I didn't have on my radar. When was the last meeting?
You didn't have the last one on your radar either.
I didn't?
No.
The last meeting was December fifteenth.
Yeah.
Are you receiving emails? If not.
No, not.
You're not?
No.
We're gonna note that.
And I take it there's no packet, right, and so.
No.
Well, there wasn't for this.
No, not for this. Um, uh, but I'll make sure that we have a brief record on our end, make sure that.
You guys okay with the fourteenth, it's hard to move them.
Yeah, I'll be fine.
Okay, you're alright?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm married.
Paul, you okay with that?
Better breakfast, flowers in the morning, you'll be fine, don't worry about it.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
We usually go out before.
There you go, yeah, exactly.
It's better not to go out on the.
Yeah, no, no, we, we go out before.
Okay.
Must have a two-year-old at home, so.
February fourteenth it is.
Thank you.
See, I told you, you're very young. Okay, uh, Counselor Glance, anything from you?
Caught me off guard there, uh, nope. Always interesting to listen to the sessions, thanks to all your work.
Well, thank you for all yours. Alright, um, with that, again, thank you everyone, and we will see you next month, and with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I moved that way close to me.
This is, okay, second.
Alright, we have a motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, we are adjourned, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy gone already? Oh yeah. I was gonna tell her.